Meeting, everyone. I want to welcome you to the meeting, the Prince Edward County Planning Commission meeting. I do have to read something in advance here. The Prince Edward County Planning Commission encourages citizens' participation in public meetings through in-person participation, which we have here. Thank you. Written comments and/or remote participation by calling in to number 1-844-890-7777. There's an access code of 390313. Additionally, citizens may view the commission meeting live in its entirety at the county's YouTube channel, the link to which is provided on the county website. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First up is an invocation. This is an unusual time in the year for us because both colleges are now out and students are getting out from school this week. Majority of them are getting out of school the end of this week. It's just a little different as you look around town and look around the county here. There'll be a lot more kids out during the day, so we just ask everybody to be safe, careful. These are our future out there, so please understand not just the children but the young adults. With that, I'd like to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any conflict of interest disclosures for tonight's meeting? Okay, that's great. The minutes, which was, we're going to defer that to the next meeting?
That's up to you.
Okay. Did anybody have a chance to look at the minutes from the prior meeting? I saw no changes. Did anybody see any changes that need to be made? Okay.
If you want to approve them, yeah.
I'd like to approve them then. So get a motion to approve the minutes.
Two.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay. Just go around the room. Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yep.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman. Minutes have been approved. We do have two public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is an amended review of special use permit application. Go ahead, I'm sorry. You go ahead.
Do you want to go with the procedures?
Yeah. Okay, real quickly, Mr. Love's going to go over the review of the special use permit. What we ask, some people have signed up outside to speak for or against each special use permit. What we'll do is we'll take that list and those people will be asked to come up to the podium first to speak for or against the special use permit after the applicant comes up and presents theirs. And then what we'll do then, we'll ask anybody in the audience if they would like to speak, even if you haven't signed up. The only thing we ask is, and this is my code, we need you to come up to the podium, state your name, where you live in the county, and then we'll ask everybody to limit it to three to five minutes. Okay? Mr. Love?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the county received an application from Dogwood Properties, Green Bay, Virginia LLC, and that's the formal name of the LLC setup for this site. We have a point of clarification on that. This is a 1.5 acre property denoted as tax map parcel 107-8-44, address of 8306 Patrick Henry Highway, Green Bay, Virginia. This was a former gas station that's been closed for many, many years, so there was really no use of the property. It was vacant property. This parcel is zoned A1 agricultural district as land surrounding it is. This public notice was properly advertised in the formal herald in the May 7th and 9th editions. Adjuncting property owners were sent sample letters, sent letters of notification. You've got those sample letters in your packet. This is for the purpose of establishing a restaurant in an existing vacant building that was a gas station. VDOT did look at this. Actually, a restaurant generates less traffic than a gas station. I remember that, I think that gas station had two pumps back in the day, so that's what the former entrances were set up for. So the entrances that are there will work for this use. I did prepare some staff template potential conditions for consideration. The applicant has seen those, basically echoed some of his hours of operation, air standard stuff such as lighting, such as parking. If any improvements are made to the entrances, they have to be done with entrance permits and of course occupancy on this structure, since it is a change of use, I've got that in there. Has to be declared by the building official based on building code after the renovations take place. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have with me. I've taken no comments against this application. Had one person call me about it, but no comments really forward against the application since it's been advertised.
Does anybody from the board have any questions for Mr. Love? Okay. Would the applicant like to come up and give us a brief overview?
As he told you, it used to be a filling station. I owned a restaurant for 23 years, been in the restaurant business a long time. Everybody keeps saying, "Open a restaurant, open a restaurant." So we're going to open a restaurant. We remodeled it, we put bathrooms on it, and we'll have the family cooking. We'll be open from 6:00 until 8:00 at night, seven days a week. Every day will be closed as Christmas. We'll have barbecue, your standard home cook, breakfast any time today. I don't care if you come up there at nine o'clock, it'll be breakfast.
Are you the chef?
Do it all.
There you go. That's great.
That's pretty much.
If everything goes through, do you have an anticipated opening schedule?
I'm hoping to be open by the end of July.
Okay.
If everything goes right. I mean, we've done most of the primary stuff and we checked all the permits and we're in the process of getting the water tested and the new bathrooms and all that, so it should be fairly simple because it would just tear the old station out and burn it out and putting siding on and doing a new kitchen.
Well, that's good. Any questions for the applicant?
Paul, just curious, what kind of sign needs you go have?
I want to put the sign in up over the porch area on the building.
On the building, okay.
It'll be on an off switch. It won't be on unless we're there. And the lighting is going to be on the same type of deal on the sides of the corners of the building, so. I talked to Mr. Love about the lighting already, so.
Yep.
I've got one other question. I know with the traffic's up and down 360, hopefully it will be very successful. Tractor trailers, how are you going to handle that? A transfer truck wants to pull in or log truck wants to pull in or whatever. I'm just curious as to how you go handle that.
I don't think they can get under the wiring that's there right now, to be honest with you.
Might not be.
So we're probably just going to say no, you know, no road tractors. I mean, I don't know what else to handle. It'd be nice to have them, there's no place to put them.
You know, there is. I'm just curious.
So let's go down the next road and park and walk up or something.
Do you have any anticipated seating? How many people it might seat?
We're shooting for around 43 to 45, and then we'll have the outside patio that's going to have like six picnic tables.
Okay, that's great. Okay.
Then we'll have any, you know, to go.
Yes.
Somebody wants to come up and order something, we'll be ready to go.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did you check that list?
Okay. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Did anybody sign up to speak? We'll double check the list. We have to do that first, that's all. Is anybody on the phone?
Yes, several.
Oh, we do? Okay.
We got one. Well, we had nobody sign up.
Nobody signed up, okay. What we'll do, we'll take the phone request first. Anybody on the phone wish to speak for or against Dogwood Properties for the restaurant? If you do, please state your name and where you live in the county.
Okay. Hold on. Let me turn. There we go. Up all the way.
Again, if you could just state your name and where you live in the county. Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Are you here to speak with regards to the restaurant?
No. No, I'm not here to speak up concerning the restaurant.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else on the call, want to call, wish to speak for or against the restaurant special use permit? Okay, if you're here for the second special use permit, please just hang on.
Okay.
Does anybody in the audience wish to speak for or against? Yes, service.
I'd just like to say that.
Could you please come up to the podium? I apologize.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I wasn't paying attention when you gave me the address.
That's okay.
My name's Donald Sura, S-U-R-A. I've known Paul Ward probably about 10 or 15 years. He had a restaurant in Burkeville with the hotel, and I used to go there, never any problems. It was always clean. I'm just speaking in favor of this restaurant in Green Bay.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak? You said the same thing? Okay. Thank you. If there's no other comments regarding the restaurant, we'll close the public hearing.
We've been going on the chat. We've been communicating. We've been making sure.
Hey, would you, are you interested in speaking for or against the restaurant? If so, could you please state your name and where you live in the county? Okay. Okay. Again, with no other comments, the special use permit, the public hearing portion is closed. From the board's standpoint, it sounds like it's a great opportunity for the community. Now, we do have the listed conditions there, which is fine with you. I guess we'd be looking for a motion to approve the special use permit subject to the conditions we have. Do I have a motion? Okay? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's go around the room. Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman says yes. The special use permit is approved. We pass it up to the county board of supervisors from here, and most importantly, we wish you the best of luck. Okay, thank you.
So we'll have a, I'm advertising tomorrow, put in the formal herald, the June 10th board meeting. That's, the hearing starts at 7:30, their meeting starts at 7:00, so we'll do the same type of thing. And then the board, this is a recommendation, the board makes the final action.
Thank you so much. You're welcome to stay for the second half. You don't have to stay. It's up to you. It's nice to see your first patrons going out with you, your first patrons. There you go.
Yeah, right across the street.
All right. So our second hearing, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Michael and Helen Royer, did I say that right?
You did.
Okay, I didn't want to mess that up. Applied for a special use permit to operate a rural events center on land totaling 136.49 acres, denoted as tax map parcel 055-8-32, with an address of 25943 Prince Edward Highway, Rice, Virginia. This is on a four-lane US 460. This parcel is zoned A1 agricultural. This hearing was also properly advertised with the formal herald, May 7th and 9th. Adjuncting property owners sent letters. You have a copy of the notice and the letters in your packet. The purpose of this is to establish a rural events center. County staff is depending, the use is generally compatible with the district, have minimal impacts on surrounding properties. Virginia Department of Transportation did look at this site as well as the Health Department, and there is a limitation on this site of what you have in your condition, template conditions of a maximum of 125 attendees with five employees. So that is a stipulation by the Health Department and VDOT for this site that will govern the site based on the available well and septic facilities and the existing driveway entrances. I've had no comments against this application. I actually had a call, someone wanting to know what a rural events center was, and I explained it to them. They said they were all for it. That was just a general citizen in the county, so we needed more of those. I'd be glad to answer any questions of you that you have with me.
I'm curious why he's limited to five employees maximum.
That's just, assume just a total.
Yeah, yeah, that, I mean.
130 total?
Yeah, 130 total.
So it could be 120 visitors and 10. I'm wondering why we're restricting the amount of employees.
I got that from their paperwork, from the Health Department and VDOT.
Do you know?
Typically, to handle that type of crowd.
But why, I mean, if you wanted 10 employees, why can't you have 10 employees?
I just remember we threw out there as a.
Yeah. And if you want, and if you want to edit the conditions so it just has 130 individuals, I think that's very appropriate. It gives inflexibility and it gives, it meets the essence of what the Health Department, I was just using the numbers that had come from them through the Health Department and VDOT.
Is anybody really going to count?
If we had a complaint, yes. If we had 200 people show up, yes. Yes, absolutely.
If it's 250, we'd be able to.
But you can certainly, I understand that, and I put those in there just to echo, but you can certainly edit that and make that change of those conditions. Like I said, that's just a staff beginning point for you all to work from.
Any other questions for Mr. Love? From the board? Okay. With that, we'll open the public hearing. If the applicant or applicants would like to come up to the podium, give us a brief overview.
The special use permit is for Red Hill Ranch. That's our LLC associated with the property. As discussed, it's 134, but there's also additional 3.7 acre property or lot that actually sits on 460, and then there's another 4.3 that's to the side of that property that is wooded and has a natural stream flowing through that. The building is 40 by 80 with two 12 by 80 M2s. In the packet, I included some pictures associated with what that looks like today. Lighting is one of the concerns, I think, for some of the conditions that we've reviewed, but there are 630-foot poles around the building, and they're solar powered with very soft lighting. So basically what happens is it gives the outline of the building and the surrounding area within 10, 20 feet. So there's nothing that points directly towards any of the properties or anywhere else. The parking is intended to be the front lot that is 3.7 acres, and that can handle a large number of cars. That's grass, but it's still well-drained. It's on a slight slope, so we don't have mud conditions or deteriorations or that type of thing. Sound mitigation, I think that's one of the conditions that people worry about out there in rural areas. Sound travels pretty well. We can turn sound in a certain direction so it's facing the wood lines, and behind that property or where that particular building is located is about another 200 acres of woodland. So it's all wooded around us except for the area that's directly on 460. We just poured the concrete floor for the main pad. The 12 by 80 pad is poured, we did that one, and we have one more to go to complete the concrete layout. And from there, we'll do siding and start to do enclosures, so the building intended to be fully enclosed. That'll also help in mitigate the sound travel. The signage is typical in guidance with what we've been provided for conditions, 5 by 5. There's a picture of what we want that to be contained in the packet. And you saw the permit from the Health Department. So we initially applied for that permit. We said it'd probably be somewhere around 125 people. That's how it was designed and built. That's in place and done. Pictures of the building specifically, what it looks like today. Again, we just completed the concrete pad, and we did some GIS mapping from the edge of the pavilion area, and we're about 750 feet away from the nearest resident. So that gives us a little bit of a buffer, and then 853, 843, somewhere in that range to the other neighbors that are indicated on that GIS map. So one of the good things about this property is up on a hill. The sunsets are absolutely amazing, and we wanted to do everything possible to take advantage of that. So picturesque, these particular events will be normalized by reservation, invitation. We may do something private ourselves, which we have done in the past, and that kind of wraps it up, so I'll be open for questions if you have any.
It will be 12-month facility? So you have heating? You have air conditioning or just heating?
Once it's enclosed and we apply HVAC, yes, it'll be 12 months.
Yep.
Yes.
Any other questions? Nothing? Very detailed information, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll open the public hearing. On the list to speak, we have Beverly Hines.
Don, you were supposed to be here first.
Ladies before gentlemen, you have to understand this.
Shame on you, John. I'm Beverly Hines, and I'm your neighbor. We joined the property on the backside, and I do have some questions. Do I just ask directly to him?
No.
What do you, to you or to him?
To the planning commission.
The planning commission, yeah.
What are the hours of operation?
So it won't be, between 10 and 11, maybe the latest we allow any.
When does it start?
It would start probably, most weddings start anywhere between 2:00 in the afternoon.
So this is a wedding venue?
Well, wedding event, it would be.
If you look at it from the extensive side of it, right, so the wedding event is typically the longest event that would occur. Business meetings and other meetings would be less.
Festivals, quilting festivals.
Say again?
Festivals, quilting festivals, and just doing, all in general, spring festival where vendors come out and they can sell their products.
And that would be at what hours?
Those hours would be daytime. Yeah. So say, I think we, I think like 10:00, 10:00 AM to maybe 5:00, yeah, 10 to 5:00.
Have you done those types of things?
We've done one, yeah. We did do one, yeah.
There on the farm? What other wedding venues and festivals, what other kind of?
Well, we're hoping, well, my anticipation is to be able to also do fundraisers. So I did a lot of that.
Such as? I mean, I'm thinking more specific.
Sarcoma for.
Specific what kind of event? My concern is motor. I hear.
Oh, no, there'll be no more, no, there's no.
No more?
No, there'll be no revving of engines or people.
No, no motor events because that has been an issue.
I had a call on that, ma'am. There's, this is not a permit for anything to do with motorization.
I just have a hard time understanding what rural event means. It's so wide open that it's a concern.
If you'll bear with me, I'll give you a definition from our county code. What it's going to mean is it's going to be a highly regulated property, is what it means. If it's, if approved. If you'll bear with me, I got to get to zoning ordinance and get to the definitions. I had another neighbor call me and asked me the same thing, so I.
That's fine.
Once they understood that, it was a little bit better.
It is a community concern.
Yes, yes, I understand.
And I've got to, bear with me, I've got to get to the right section. Yeah, but we'll get to it.
May I ask if food will be while you're looking? Will food be served? Will you all be, or food trucks or?
Possible.
What's possible?
Food trucks.
Will you all be preparing food?
No, we don't have a commercial kitchen yet, so we've got to get up with the Health Code Department. We got to get up with the Health Department and speak to them about, and what structure do we need to build those, if we want to do that.
That's the part.
So your pavilion or your, the enclosed 12 by 80 is mostly for?
It's 40 by 80.
40 by 80.
40 by 80, yeah.
But it will mostly be for festivals and for wedding type?
Or anything in general, like nothing motorized, just things that the community wants to get together, you know? Things if someone's child is sick in the community and need someone, some place to have their fundraiser for their child, you know? Or for even their parents or.
There's a specific.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm filling time.
Are you going to be open seven days a week?
Sorry?
How many days? You're going to, you'll be available seven days a week if somebody has an event, correct? Request? Okay.
Yes.
It's only to be reservation only?
Yes. Yeah, by reservation only, yes.
Oh, so it's by reservation only?
Yeah, they have to, yeah, they have to come in a lot of soon, like, working's not going to say.
And the name, I didn't get.
Our last name?
No, 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 the name of your farm, you said.
Red Hill Ranch.
Red Hill Ranch.
It's.
Is that the sign that was out there?
Yes. Yeah, the one that the beautiful wind decided to.
That was the wind.
Yeah, it was the wind.
That was.
That wind up there is all like.
That's what allows the nice view.
Yeah, well, Nirvana, Nirvana Hart forgot to tell us about how the wind just blew through.
How about?
I don't complain during the summer, but it's a beautiful breeze during the summer.
Go ahead.
Well, I didn't want to interrupt, Beverly.
Yes.
I do have a question. Go ahead.
Community gossip also says perhaps horse events?
You know, it, I know at one point in time there were.
Yes.
Big horse events out there. So we could possibly in the future look into doing something like that.
Do you have the ring? Is the ring up in function?
No, the ring is no longer there, so.
So it's not that kind of?
No, it will be, but right now we are still trying to finish doing what we want to do, but we also have to be careful because there are waterways going through, and I want to protect the waterways. So, you know, we have one lot that's on the left side of, yeah, the girl, yeah, in her house, it would be on the left side of us. That would be a beautiful spot for a horse area, but it's a lot to do that, you know, because you have to clear up the land, and you have to make sure that none of the waterways get affected by that. So I want to support it, but I just think it would be better to do it on that end, having that we had five horses or six horses we had. But having our horses there, we noticed that when we worked them or tried to, to work them in the rain, they were disturbed by the other horses that were in that area, so we got to bring it back over in the other end of the rain. So, and it's a possibility, yeah. Because I would love to see something like that go out.
Maybe to help, Mr. Love will go over what is considered in the definition.
Yeah, I had it and I shrunk it. Hold on. It was in the commercial. When I changed the screen, it flipped on me, so bear with me, I did find it. So a rural events facility is a facility located on a parcel of land, 20 acres or larger in size, utilized for events typically conducted on a single day for which attendance is permitted by invitation or reservation. Facilities may host usual and customary activities, including but not limited to private parties, business meetings, educational seminars, wedding receptions, wedding ceremonies, class and family reunions, showers, i.e. baby and bridal, similar events and activities for nonprofit organizations and similar events and activities as determined by the zoning administrator. That would be myself with the county administrator. It is not in any way, shape, motorized facility or anything to do with motorsports.
In a way it's stated, it's not overnight, no overnight?
No overnight.
Yes. And as they're saying, it's by reservation, you know, reservation slash invitation only? Okay.
So when they brought their idea, I looked at their code and it fit this, this is a[1752.33] We, this is a modern term for us that we have put in. We put it in our ordinance a couple of years ago for, primarily when we had the, the barn at Forehouse Road. We knew we had several other wedding facilities. Some of those are grandfather or non-conforming, they didn't get permitted under the rural events code. So we searched code in Virginia and found that this is, rural events facility is a kind of a, a term that a lot of localities use. And so, but we did put parameters on what it is. So that's how the, that came to be in the county code.
Good. I can't say that I'm still either for or against, but, but I appreciate the information and your openness.
Beverly, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beverly, I have a question for you. I'm looking at a map. Is your property just to the east?
John, to the east it is, isn't it?
I'm looking at the, the aerial photo and it. Some barn or some shed or workshop facilities. Is that you?
No.
I think they're, they're to the west.
I would say they'd be west.
460 runs west of this property. And John went to the west.
Okay.
You're talking about my property.
Oh, you're to the east.
We joined it in the back. We joined, uh, F Creek.
Okay. And so my question for Mr. and Mrs. Royer is how will it be accessed? Has that already been established? Because I.
Yes, off existing driveway off of 460.
460.
Okay. Is it away, kind of in the middle, away from your neighboring properties to as little disturbance as possible?
Both sides.
Yeah.
Front and both sides, yeah. Yeah, right on 460. How many of the house trailers there? And the Boon's Farm. It's very close to. But I think your mint barn used to be back. Yeah.
Yes.
Near the, where the old barn was.
So is the mint barn going where the rainwater used to be?
Yes.
Well, I don't know what that is.
So they're probably where the rain.
So it's in the back.
Okay.
And maybe it would be, as I understand it, and I may be wrong, it would be more, as you said, to a wooded area. The front of 460 is pretty populated.
Right, right.
Lots of houses.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the road is, the access road is gonna be kind of away, as far away from the neighbors as possible?
It's the original access, and that's the only one.
It looks like the center of the property.
Yeah, it's kind of.
It's very much in the center.
Okay.
Maybe a little bit to the left. It's where they used that old, or what I, and the pool, where they used to gather.
Okay. Beverly, thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Sur, Don?
Good evening. I'm the guy that spoke with Mr. Love this past week and.
Oh, okay.
He did an excellent job because I called a few people in the county, nobody knew what a rural event thing was. And then being that Google was our friend, I looked it up. And he's already answered the concern of the UTVs, ATVs, motorcycles. Okay? Because that is a big concern of mine. My property is sharing 1,300 feet of their property, even though it's wooded. My next concern is the speakers, they're pointing in my direction. I've already heard the music. I don't mind, and I'm not complaining, I would like a caveat that maybe we stop at 10 o'clock at night. Because when they had horses up there, we could, we could hear the, the event and, you know, it, I don't, I don't really care about that. 10 o'clock at night, I would, I don't know if you guys can do it because I know what the county ordinance says, I know the noise, but. I don't know if you'd be in agreement with that or not, as far as the music stopping, yeah.
Okay, if you, I got, I'll have to look, give me one second, I'll look up something for you. Sure. I've got a condition in there that they abide by the noise ordinance.
Yeah, you're telling me.
Right now, I've got a, and again, this can be edited by these gentlemen. It's just a tender template what we use for the barn at Forehouse. I've got quiet time from 11:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. They can adjust that as possible. So the, the noise ordinance in Air County requires to file a formal complaint to individuals of a dis, of different households. Okay? So just clarify, clarify on that. That's how complaints require. Hold on one second. And I want, let me get to the section that talks about how we define that. Bear with me. It said, it talks about being unlawful, it talks about. So. Bear with me, I gotta find. It will be unlawful for someone even from a, to permit sound to be heard across a residential property boundary or through partitions common to two dwellings within a building to, to be plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet. It's to be from, it's a word missing, from the building in which is, it is located, to sound plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet from its source. That's in their ordinance. There's also stuff about vehicles and stuff like that. So that's in the noise ordinance and I've got that they would be abide by their noise ordinance.
Right, I, I, I knew the noise, I looked it up. And, and my only thing is, is 10 o'clock at night, we've got our windows open, we're sleeping and they're enjoying their time. But you guys, all I ask is that that happens there. You guys mentioned horses and waterways. I hope that you're aware that, that one of the creeks is Sailor's Creek. That goes to the battlefield. So, you know, I'm, I'm just, doesn't bother. Yes. Our property is right at the bottom of Sailor's Creek with your property. You know, so, you know. But in regards to their zoning request as a resident, I'm in favor of it. I just wanted to bring those two caveats up.
Thank you so much. It's well taken. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak for or against here in the audience? Do we have anybody on the phone still? Could you please state your name and where you live in? Could you please state your name and where you live in the county?
I have my family all across the area.
Your name? Your name? Okay. Okay.
I want to know if they plan to expand beyond property that they have.
No, no, it would be, it would be restricted to the current property.
Expand beyond your property?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's restricted to this parcel, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay. I was, I was, I was thinking about, and they're, they're trying to expand beyond this, not this particular property.
No, the permit is only, is restricted to the existing parcel that they have. Okay? Okay. Do you have any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay. Could you please give me your name, state your name and where you live in the county?
My name is Deborah Young and I do not live in the Kent County, but I am, I have a property. And I want to, my question is, how close is this venue going to be to, I'm going to give you the parcel number, 055, that's A, that's 3. Want to know what, actually, I can tell from the photos.
At least 18, at least 800 feet though.
It would be at least 800 feet?
Okay, at least 800 feet, okay. All right, and my, my next question is, not being familiar with your process, once, I, it seems like you vote this evening, and then what's the next step?
Our job as the planning commission is to vet these special use permits and we determine whether or not we approve it, we, we put, table it, or we turn it down. Either way, it goes to the county board of supervisors from there. Our job is to review these in advance to the county board of supervisors. So if it will be approved tonight by the planning commission, it would go to the next county board of supervisors meeting.
Okay, and, and the next step, is there any other process for input?
Same thing.
Yeah, same thing, exactly what we have, we have a public hearing, this same way, it'll be, it'll be posted in the paper.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else on the call?
Tell her to, if she wants to.
I was gonna ask, this area is concerning that one structure on the property, 40 by 80 feet?
You don't have any, it's the only structure, the 40 by 80 feet?
That's currently the only structure. Yes, it's, it's a 40 by 80 foot structure right now.
Oh, that's what the special provision is needed for? The property that's, uh, uh, buildings that's over there?
That's the event space that's in the special use permit right now.
For the event, okay. I understand, okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Tell them if they want to call, then, I think, they would've got a letter. Tell them that if they want to call the number on their office, I can go over some specifics.
Sure. If anybody on the call has any questions, there is a telephone number on the letter. You're more than welcome to call that during the business hours and speak to Mr. Love or one of the staff and they can give you a little bit more detail on your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else on the call wish to speak? Okay, thank you very much for your input. Anybody else in the audience? No, you don't get a chance anymore, no, you're, hang on one second, just will it. Take your time. You're fine.
So as, as I understand, your special use permit is to have wedding ceremonies and different types of ceremonies brought into the property. Obviously, sound for us is the biggest concern. I, my name's Seth Sur, I live on their residence at 472 Einstein. I am concerned with the effect that this is gonna have on the wildlife, who quite commonly frequent the, the back end of their property where the speakers will be pointed, the extra travel. So I will speak up and say I am against this, this request.
Okay. Thank you. Beverly, you had another question?
A statement, one of the people that just called. The property that's very closest to them that have elderly people.
Okay.
Living there now. I think one, I'm fairly sure that those are relatives.
Okay.
The elderly people in the firm that do live there now, who would, would not be able to.
Right.
And I think these are relatives.
Okay.
That might be a question if they do call.
Yeah.
They, they do have personal.
Okay.
Interests, not just somebody.
Sure. They're speaking for somebody that's a resident there? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Just one thing, just so I can give them a little reinsurance.
You get a rebuttal?
Yes.
Thank you all. Once the building is enclosed, just so you all know, when it's finally enclosed, it's going to be insulated. So when, it, and it all depends on what kind of bat you use in the insulation. So we can, we can get certain bat to kind of constrict the music a little bit. So that way, if it runs over 10 o'clock, 11, most weddings do not last till 11 o'clock, you know? But it's all in what we use. So we're going to be doing, and, and I will look into that to make sure. One thing is I'm not looking to have a nightclub speaker system put in. They don't need it that loud. It's, you know, the bride needs to be able to dance and have a good time with their grooms and their guests. To me, that would be what we really need to be concerned about.
So what you're stating is the noise or the music or whatever is gonna be inside the building?
Yes.
Okay, you're not looking outside? Okay. Okay.
No, like maybe during the day, we might have some music outside if we decide to do some kind of festival, but, but, you know, but it's going to be to a bare minimum.
Okay.
So, and we will have that, like, in our contract when we write it up for people to rent.
Yeah, okay.
So that way they do understand that, you know, you've got to think of your neighbors too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing so the board can discuss on our end here.
I think you've got a couple of conditions, 12 and 13, you probably want to look at.
And from the condition standpoint, one of the comments was, and well taken, we'd like to change number 12 to 132, combination of visitors and employees, 130 instead of 125 and 5. So we'll change that to 130. That way that eliminates any need that if you had to have more employees or somebody could question that from there. Hours of operation was one other comment that was made.
I'd like to make a condition on that, is that we are to restrict them to 10.
10.
And, and that is, I guess I'm getting some clarification, is that everyone off property when we say hours of operation? Or is that when the?
The event is over?
The event's over, but there's still people exiting, I guess.
Yeah.
And I didn't know what hours of operation entail.
Well, I did not, for, for, for want of clarification, I did not put hours of operation on here. I put quiet time and quiet times intended for amplified music to shut down. That's what we had, I mean, you.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm listening, okay, I'm, I'm listening.
So, I mean, so you need to maybe have that discussion with them on, you would need to make another condition in a, or another addition. You'd want quiet time and then you, if you want to do hours of operation, I think you want to address that.
Yeah.
As well, you have to list that. Because that's gonna be staff in the yard, staff working.
Right, there's people coming in, leaving in.
People helping people park.
Well, after the event, they're gonna have cleanup, I mean.
Yeah, they have cleanup.
They gotta do cleanups, so you can't say, you gotta be off the problem, you know?
Yeah, so.
But I would like to make a stipulation that the, that the event time is concluded at 10:00.
10:00 p.m. Okay.
Yes. That makes sense.
Would that be a problem?
And then you still have quiet time. And quiet time is after 11 o'clock?
Well, well, right now, we've got quiet 11 to 8, you can change that.
Right.
Yeah. That's just 13.
I mean.
Just trying to get some clarification.
I mean, if you're gonna have.
The concern, some of the concerns, but no worries.
Well, your, your concern is correct. You can, you can go all the way to 10 o'clock and still be cleaning up facilities at midnight.
Yeah, yes.
That's very possible.
Yes.
So there will be traffic in and out of there after a 10 o'clock period of time.
But as far as noise from the actual event.
Sorry?
As far as noise from the actual event would be 10 o'clock is what the, the comment was or the question was, the event?
Right. I, I, I think we've, we've commented back on the mitigation controls that we're willing to do. It, it's not a full concert stereo setup in any way. Typically, it's Bluetooth speaker, about that big, and it's, you know, 50 amp or something like that. It's, it's nothing extremely large. There's no intent to do it, we're much older now and we're not into that scene, so I think that, that we can handle 10 o'clock shutdown. But it should be, should be known that we will have operations happening, you know, after.
And I've been at events where they say the event closes at 10:00 and then people just.
Sure.
Yeah, we have trash cleanup, we have all those things. So we, there's a lot to do after 10 o'clock whenever one. Typically, wedding events, what we find is that the majority of people are gone by 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock. And, and there are a few that want to last towards the end, but we can, we can work to shut those down earlier.
Thank you.
So on your events, do you want to, I think you want to add a, a statement to number 13? If you're gonna have the event shut down, you might as well do the quiet time at 10 o'clock, so it's consistent. Because you only have a gap. Is that? I'm, I'm making sure, so I'm making sure that we staff can write this condition up. So we can put in there, events shall take place from?
8.
8?
To 10:00 p.m.
Okay.
And then the other one is on number 12, we're gonna go to 130 total maximum.
Total, total and maximum, oh, yeah. Did I capture what your intent is?
Thank you.
All right.
So again, we're looking at the options of, do we get a motion in favor of the event? And do we look at table it, or do we look at a motion to, you know, decline the special use permit? And I'm looking for a motion here from the board.
All right, let me, let me get clarification. You're, you're saying put the stipulation in there, the event is from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Yeah, we're changing those two points.
And Stone is saying quiet time is from 10:00 to 8:00?
You're still gonna have that.
You still have, quiet time is still there.
Okay.
Are we changing it to 10:00 to appease, appease the neighbors, the neighbors' concerns?
Yes.
Okay.
You guys are okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Well, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve it with said stipulation. Well, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve it with said stipulation.
The two stipulations, you know, is stated stipulations with two changes, one is to the, the total, uh, number would be a hundred and thirty, and the other one would be to the hours of operation and quiet time to ten P M.
Correct.
A hundred and thirty including employees.
Yes, a hundred and thirty including employees. I can, I can work that one.
Limit him to employees.
Yeah.
That's, that could get cloudy if somebody wanted to get funny about.
So, so what we have is you make, I'm sorry.
I'm making the motion to approve.
Hang on one second, go ahead, Mr. Gill.
One question, this size building, Robert, what, what is the occupancy for its fire code?
That's going to be determined by the building official?
Yeah, so that number could change if the building official states it's a hundred, that number would change it based on the forty by eighty.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Everything's subject to the, the building inspector that way, okay?
If, I mean, if you, if you want to, I say, I don't think I, if you want to put something like that in here, I can say, uh, final.
Final occupancy.
Occupancy of the, maximum occupancy, my occupancy of the building, like what we used on, um, the previous one. You hold on, I'll read, let me, let me grab that real quick, I can, if they're okay with this wording. So what I've got on that one is occupancy shall be limited to the determination by the Prince Edward County Building Official in accordance with the two thousand twenty-one Virginia Building Code, that's what we're under now. As amended.
As amended, yeah, okay.
You folks okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll add that one?
Okay. Okay. So now we're back to the, the motion, you just, with the three amendments we made, is the way you can state.
I'll make the motion to approve the, the complication with the three amendments as stated.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, okay, we'll just go around the room then. Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Pringleman, yes, uh, the motion is moved to push this to the county board of supervisors for the next meeting and approved by the, the board here, okay? And again, I want to thank everybody for your time and your attention, input is the most important thing we look for from the county residents, so thank you.
And we'll have the same exact process, same exact, they run their meeting for almost the exact same, in fact, we follow their procedures, so you'll have the same opportunity to come back and speak. Uh, what you said will be in the minutes to them, everything, but every clerk will trans, uh, transpose all that, and, but you can come back and say the same thing, say something different.
The county board of supervisors gets all the minutes and all those notes too from our meeting here.
And that will be on Tuesday, June tenth, uh, tenth at seven, the meeting, the hearing starts at seven thirty, the meeting starts at seven o'clock.
Okay. You're welcome to state for the balance of it, otherwise, uh, thank you so much for your time, best of luck to you, thank you.
You ready for supervisor actions?
Yes. I was going to say, next on the agenda is supervisor's actions.
Yes, sir, so the, um, one of the, the C E P solars went forward to the, um, the board of supervisors, and that was the Oak Lane Solar. And that was, uh, approved, the siding agreement was approved, um, and the other application, the Green Bay site, is going to come to them at their June tenth meeting. They have pulled trees off of, there's a, you know, that, remember that property had a, a, a stream creek, creek bed running through it? And, and three sixty, so they pulled all the panels off of the three sixty side of the stream.
Okay.
Um, they also have a letter from, um, Mr. Mac Bailey in support, he has, he's, they met with him, two representatives, uh, and I think they walked the site, uh, so he has no issues with it. So that, we're going to take that to pu, to public hearing at the June meeting.
Okay.
For consideration, um, they, it's very technical, but they are appealing the substantial and accord determination that it wasn't, so the, that'll be part of the board's deliberation to the way the, Virginia Code reads it, if the board approves the special use or the siding agreement, it deems it a substantial accord. And some of the stuff is in tax, tax code and in fifteen point two dash twenty-two thirty-two. So their lawyer, you know, filed that, 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 that's customary, we've had those, one of those before, uh, so just one, point of clarification on that, um, I don't have any old business.
Any old business from the board? Any new business?
Okay, uh, want to talk about the next meetings, unless we get an application filed by next Friday, um, we will not have a June seventeenth meeting. Um, I haven't talked to anybody, so I don't, I don't anticipate, unless somebody just comes over to the woodwork with one I've never, hadn't talked to. We've got a couple of solar sites out there, I think, that may come forward in the months to come, but they're not ready yet. We do, we are going to be advertising a joint public hearing with the board of supervisors for the, the specific for cop plan.
Okay.
Say that again, for what?
Comprehensive plan, and that is scheduled to take place in this room at seven P M. on June, Tuesday, June twenty-fourth.
Okay.
So, and so you will not have a seventeenth meeting, but we are advertising, um, and requesting that'll be a, a joint meeting on the twenty-fourth.
But don't cancel the June.
Uh, don't cancel the June.
Another week.
I, I'll, I'll send you an email next Friday.
Twenty-fourth, you said.
Yes, sir, if I don't get anything by next Friday, we will cancel that, but I don't want to say that, I don't want to jinx it for you, anyway. We may, I, I don't think I'll have anything, because V D I hadn't even told me they're talking to anybody.
And you say that twenty-fourth is set?
Yes, sir, in this room. And tip, what, what we're planning on doing is going, we'll come up with some additional seating and have the board appearing, you folks down there. We'll make that, we'll make that work.
I'd make a motion that the board sits down there and we sit up here.
Okay, I'll let Mr.. We'll put that in the.
Why would you like me to sit?
You're, you're going to sit, right?
Don't answer that, John.
We're going to put you with a dunks cap in the corner there, because you won't know what to say.
He gets to talk twice, because he's.
Yes, he does.
He's on the planning commission annual board, so he gets, he gets to talk, comment twice.
Multi-talented.
What time is that meeting on the twenty-fourth?
Seven P M., sir.
Okay.
And we'll be sending you notices and packets, just like we, well, it's cop plan, but we're obviously sending you an agenda and all that, just like we would for a regular meeting ahead of time.
That's a public hearing?
It's a public hearing, yeah.
With that, uh, I make a motion, will you adjourn? Meeting adjourned.
All right.
All right. No, I thought that was pretty good, I thought it was good, good input.